Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being Tuesday, September 27, 2016. We're starting at 7:15. We were in executive session, and I'll give a report on the executive session a little later in our agenda. But I first wanted to make a couple of announcements, and then invite some special students to come up for us. This meeting today is being recorded by the Peabody School Committee's recording secretary, Marge Macarelli, and is also being broadcast on PAT. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levine for some special introductions. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce two of our finest students in the Peabody Public Schools. Brooke Childress is a five-year-old who was in Mrs. DeRouze's kindergarten class at the Brown. Her teacher says that she is happy, and I can attest to that. She's very happy. She makes good choices, and is making a lot of friends. She likes to go to the park to play, and she likes to celebrate friends' birthdays, and take care of all of her family pets. So, Brooke, would you join us, please? Maybe stand right over here. And I'm going to introduce now Olivia Guarino. Olivia is a first grader in Mrs. Conner's class at the Brown School. Her teacher says that she is smart, kind. Kind is really important, Olivia. That's a great thing to say about somebody. And is always willing to help her classmates. She loves spending time with her family and playing with her friends, and she is a Girl Scout, plays Little League softball, and flag football. She is passionate about school, loves to read and travel. And I would also take this opportunity to introduce their wonderful principal, Elaine Metropolis, from the Brown School. So if you would come on up, Olivia. And if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. That's it, yep. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good job. Next time, we'll have a bigger flag for you. Thank you, parents, for bringing them. We appreciate it.
Okay, that is wonderful that we do that to start every meeting. That's terrific, to acknowledge some of our students. Now, we're going to go to the agenda. I did want to make, I did receive a couple of phone calls from a couple of residents that routinely watch our meetings, and a couple of them asked to just make sure that we speak into the microphone, that there were some, a couple times that they couldn't quite hear very well. So I just want to make sure that all of us speak into the microphone as best we can. So let's start with approval of minutes. Mrs. Carpenter?
Make a motion to approve minutes for September 30.
Oh, no, that's right.
Mrs. Carpenter, your voice has dropped.
Yes. I had it backwards. Mr. Rozignol, approval of minutes.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion for approval of the September 13, 2016, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please, for approval.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3196, dated September 27, 2016, in the amount of $640,468. Subject to audit.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3196, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3197, dated September 27, 2016, in the amount of $2,342,556,97. Subject to audit.
Second. Great. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 3197, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report on our new Higgins Middle School?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we have, since our, since our previous meeting, we did have our monthly meeting on the 15th, and much of the discussion was really wrap-up of items on the building site here, of the new building, and then discussion of Phase Two, which, as you all know, is the demolition and the construction of fields. The seeding is going very well on the property. This is the time of year when the grass is hopefully going to take, so that in the spring it will, it will come in really well. The construction that's going on, on this site, is honestly almost completed. They're finishing up on sidewalks, they're finishing up the drainage, and again, putting in landscaping. On the other side of the fence, the demolition is going well. Presently, the only parts of the building left are from the library to the main office. The auditorium is still standing, but the cafeteria and the gym, everything on this end, is, is gone. We're right on target for our timeframes, so everything is moving along. The weather has been cooperating, and that's been a huge boon to the entire project. I did ask about the sidewalk issue that was brought up at our school committee meeting, and I was told that we are only going to be doing the corrections to sidewalks and walking paths right at the, at the boundary of the property, but that everything else does need to go through the, through the city side. So I know that's going to come up at the building and grounds, but I just clarified it with our builder. And the next meeting, which will be held here again in Higgins, is the third Thursday of the month. I was just trying to figure out what day that is. I want to say it's the 19th or 20th of October, but it is here at 4:00 PM. It's always the third Thursday of the month, and they are open to the public. And then, as you all know, we had a beautiful ceremony on Saturday, the 17th, where members of the public came in, they were given tours. It was amazing to hear what the students spoke of when they were questioned by people about, you know, some of the features in a classroom and in specific areas. The kids were wonderful. They did a great job. They, they understand everything, and they could explain it to people. Everyone who came through, we had a lot of accolades on how beautiful the building was, how technologically advanced it is, and also what a great contribution this is to the city, and people were very pleased. We also got a lot of requests afterwards for an additional day for tours, so we'll have to look into something like that. But all in all, those, those two days between the meeting and then the ceremony, it was, it was really very nice to see what has come about in just really three short years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item is an update, program update for the For Kids Only Before and After School Program.
Yeah, the after-school program is going well, Mr. Mayor, and we're moving along toward opening our before-school programs. I will have a full update for you at the next school committee meeting, at which time I hope that we're close to, if not already, opening the before-the-bell programs.
Great. Any questions or comments? Excellent. And the other item is the revised 2016-2017 regular school committee meeting schedule that we discussed and approved at the last meeting. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize to the committee, and to you, and to the administration, for an oversight that, on the school committee calendar, and Dr. Levine brought it to my attention during a conversation earlier today, the November 9, the meeting that we moved from, agreed to move from November 8 to November 9, 2016, we moved it because Yom Kippur begins at sundown on September 8, November 8. It actually ends at sundown on November 9.
I think you're talking about October.
Sorry, thank you.
Election.
I appreciate it. October 12, yeah. So, the holiday begins on October 11, in, at sundown on Tuesday night, so we agreed to move the meeting to Wednesday, October 12, which is actually a day off from school, and buildings I think are closed as well. But the holiday doesn't end until sundown, and the holiday ends with what's called the break fast. Jews that celebrate Yom Kippur fast for the entire day, from sundown to sundown, and then there's traditionally a meal, we call it a break fast, that's held with families and friends and things along those lines. So I would respectfully, again, apologize for the, for the oversight on my part, and respectfully ask if we could move the October 12 meeting on Wednesday to October 13 or some other date that was convenient for the committee.
October 13 would be a city council meeting date. That might make it very difficult for me.
October 10 that week is Columbus Day, which is the day that I thought of as well, but again, it's Columbus Day, so that wouldn't work. Tuesday and Wednesday's a holiday. I don't know.
Do you want to just have October 18, the following Tuesday, and we'll have quick meetings back-to-back weeks, but I think it's going to be difficult to schedule something that week, the week of October 10. Mrs. Dunn?
Does anyone have a calendar handy?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Sometimes when you have a five-week month, I was hoping that if we could, we could push it back a week, but that would be next week. Okay. Thank you.
Would October 18, Tuesday, October 18 be acceptable? I think that's probably our best choice to be made. I think that we go October 10 is very difficult. And I don't want to schedule it on the night of a city council meeting, because quite frankly, we could, there could be some items that we need to address at that meeting. I'd like to have that free, just in case. Okay, so we will go forward then with this regular meeting date schedule for 2016-2017 as submitted, except we are changing the October 12 date to October 18.
Thank you. Thank you for the courtesy.
Why don't we, Mr. Hockman, why don't you can make that in the form of a motion, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. All approved? Thank you.
It's time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. There is anybody, we just have to make room. We all set? Okay. Superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, I do fast on that day, but I count the day as a full day for 12 hours that day, instead of 24.
It's the algorithm.
It is. The, I wanted to bring to your attention on the superintendent's report that there are a number of charter school applications in, and one of them happens to be in this general area that could impact us if it's approved, it's in your packet, it will be in Lynn if it's approved, and it's a 5 through 12 charter school, and the, eventually we'll have 635 kids in it. So, I doubt if any charter school would be able to compete with us in this beautiful school, but I did want to bring it to your attention. There are a number of things on your table that were not in your packet. I know that Mrs. Carpenter will scold me for that. However, I did want to bring to your attention that typically before October 1, you approve the pay-to-ride policy that you have in the past.
Motion to receive.
You have this?
Heard the motion to receive by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor to receive?
So I don't think that this is any different than what you've had in the past. Mrs. Macarelli, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so, I'm sorry, it's the same policy that you've approved. And I do want to let you know, and the public know, that this year, we are extraordinarily full on, on a number of buses, so there will not be a whole lot of seats available. So I would urge, if the school committee passes the pay-to-ride, that, I would urge the community that wants to take advantage of it to do so quickly, because we have a number of buses that are either full or near capacity. And part of your policy is that we will not add any buses for pay-to-rides. So there will be a limited number of seats available this year.
Motion to approve pay-to-ride.
Second. Heard the motion for approval of the pay-to-ride program, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call vote, please. Oh, on the, on the motion, Mrs. Dunn.
Is this also subject to our one-way, our policy of payment for one-way? Okay. Does it say it there? Unless, I mean, I'm trying to scan it.
No.
Yeah, through the Chair. I know that we made that amendment last year, when we adopted one-way busing, so I would absolutely encourage the board to do that again this year.
And then the motion to include the pay-to-ride, excuse me, pay-to-ride to include one-way bus passes and all other policies that our Transportation Department currently has.
Second. Great. Heard that revised motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Was it Mr. Rozignol? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Let me if we could just make that clear on the paper.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you, there is a, the yearly annual New York City field trip from the Higgins Middle School that is scheduled in May. The principal did ask me to put it on tonight's agenda, because he does have a meeting scheduled next week, and he will start collecting money at that time, and he didn't want to do so unless he had permission of the school committee to go. So I apologize that this was not in your packet. I did intend to make it for next week, the next school committee meeting. However, due to the fact that he does have a meeting scheduled with parents, I would ask you to take this up tonight and recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor?
I abstain.
On the motion.
I would abstain.
Okay. Roll call, actually, we're going to take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Abstain.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
In your packet, just for your information, three of our young men from our technology group have been noted in a national magazine. This is a draft of the article. There may be some changes before it actually gets published, so I would ask you not to share it with the public, but congratulations to Chris, Mark, and of course Jared for being chosen to be interviewed, and put Peabody in the national spotlight, and make us look very good, as you do every day. So, thank you to our techie boys, and including the ones that weren't noted here. I did want to bring you up to date on EpiPens. We are training all personnel in all schools. We are getting closer and closer to actually having EpiPens in the building. We still have not located EpiPen holders, other than the 10 that we have at the schools now. We're still trying to do that. Sharon Cameron is working feverishly to try to find a company that has either stored them or has remade them, but right now, we're out. We have 10, and that's one for every school. We obviously need more for the high school, middle school, and a couple of the bigger elementaries, so. We continue to work on that, but we're getting at least closer and closer to the doctor writing the prescription for the EpiPens and getting them into the buildings. People are getting near the point where they've all been trained and certified by the nurse. Very quickly, as you know, the way that I offer MCAS scores for the school committee is to have each principal present their own building, which they typically do in the spring, when they present their improvement plans. But I did want to give you a district perspective very quickly, and again, I apologize that this wasn't out to you in your packet, but the embargo had not been lifted. It's just been lifted. The newspaper has been able to publish, and this was not available for you under the embargo until I was sure that the embargo had been lifted. But it is now, and you have it in front of you, and, you know, just generally speaking, I will tell you that we are pretty steady. All of our schools are rated number two, except for the West and the high school. The West is a one, which is the best you can be, and the high school is a three. It continues to struggle to get out of that three-to-two category. As we build the budget for next year, I will have some recommendations for you as to what it is that I think we need to do regarding curriculum and instruction at the high school. We have some wonderfully talented teachers, and a talented and hard-working administration, and great kids. We should be able to do better than, than the three, and I think that it's just a matter of reorganizing, refocusing, and maybe adding some resources to the high school regarding curriculum and instruction, so that they can get out of this level three. But I'm very proud of the work that our teachers do in our classrooms every day. I've been around to all of our schools, some schools twice. I see amazing things happening, and it's, it's really all about the teachers in the classroom, and what they do with kids. Truly amazing. Elaine Metropolis is here tonight, and I don't want to embarrass her, but she has some particular challenges that she deals with on a day-to-day basis. I had a wonderful opportunity to actually see how she handled one of those challenges, which sometimes takes her entire day right now. She's turning lives around. It's the amazing skills and patience and talent that she has. We are so lucky to have her leading the Brown School, as we are lucky to have all of our principals, who are so hard-working and dedicated to making the lives of kids better. MCAS and these scores are simply one pinpoint in time. They tell us not a whole lot about whether or not kids are going to succeed. I had the privilege of being with Chris Gabrielli over the last three days. I've known Chris for a number of years. Chris, of course, is a major player in, in political and educational circles. He is now the Chair, excuse me, the Chair of the State Board of Higher Education in Massachusetts, and in his keynote address to New England Superintendents in a conference that I run every year, Chris gave us hope that common sense and good judgment is going to come back to the discussion table regarding education and educational accountability. Chris talked about a number of states, including Massachusetts, that are doing research on why it is that kids don't do well in college. And one of the pieces of research that he talked about was taking kids from the Accuplacer, which is a standardized test, placing kids into college courses, and then looking at the remedial courses that a lot of kids, thousands of kids, go into in Massachusetts in college, and, and wondering why they didn't do well. The percentages of success are very, very low. And then they looked at, surprise, 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 the grade point average of kids in high school, and they looked at the impact of teachers in the classroom who know these kids best, who have been with them 180-some-odd days, and they looked at the correlation between kids' grade point average in high school, and their success in college, and their accuracy of placement in college. And you know what? The correlation is much higher. And Chris actually said, maybe it's time we don't pay so much attention to standardized tests. Now, for the Chairman of the State Board of Higher Education to say that, that's something. He also said something else that, that I really enjoyed listening to. He said, the federal government is getting tired of K through 12 public education, which means they're going to take their paws more and more out of K through 12 public education, which by the way, they have no legal right to be in in the first place. If you Google the Constitution of the United States, education will come up exactly zero times, because it's a state right. It's in every state constitution. He said, they're going to now concentrate, he thinks, on higher education, community colleges, colleges and universities. That's going to be very good for us. So I think the pendulum is starting to swing, and there's a little bit of crack in the wall regarding standardized testing and accountability. It's not going to happen really quickly, because it took 25 years for us to get to the point we're at now. Some would say even 75 years for us to get to the point that we're at now. But I think that the discussions are going to have just a little bit more common sense regarding what standardized tests do for us. As I look through these scores, and I see some difficulty maybe in grade six math, but I see some strengths across the board as well. I look at the high school, and I'd like to see a little bit better scores on, on the standardized tests here. I look at the Brown with, with her unbelievable challenges, being able to be in the, in the two category. I just say to myself, you know, what really matters is the teacher in the classroom, and we really have always known that. And quite frankly, I think we've been sold a bill of goods over the past 20 years around standardized testing. It's easy for the public to go to the globe and look at 1 through 350 and say, oh, we're 28, and somebody else is 39. We're better than that school system. I don't think so. If you ask why, they won't know why. They won't know what it means. To tell you the truth, I'm not sure I know what it means. So, getting back to some practicality, and, and the relationship between teachers and kids, and dealing with mental health, and hunger, drug addiction, and all the things that impact families and children in schools, I think that we're going to be able to refocus our efforts and energy on really the whole child, and really mean it for a change. So I'm very proud to be in Peabody, very proud to lead this school system. I think our test scores are indicative of the hard work and talent that we have up and down the line, from administration to teaching, to kids, and parents. This has been a great community for a lot of years that supports its school system. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'm, I'm done. On your table, you also have an issue that I know is important to all of you, and particularly to Mr. Hockman, so I'll leave that for you to bring up, and that is, I passed out the MIA rule, MIAA rule on baseball and softball regarding women and their ability to compete in baseball. I'll answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Any questions for Dr. Levine? Mr. Hockman?
No, but just procedurally, if we can just move to accept the MCAS packet, the Squad Ball's article, and the educational trip request.
Second. Heard the motion?
Second.
By Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor for receiving those documents?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And we'll go now to written communications. We do have one written communication regarding school start time to be received.
Motion received.
Heard the motion to receive by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Thank you.
Question.
Oh, on that, Mrs. Carpenter.
Who submitted that?
Jared.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. There was no name.
I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. And if it's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, we can talk about the MIAA at some point at your discretion. So, actually, the, the article that I submitted with regard to school start times was emailed to me by a parent. This is a conversation that I think we've started a few times. It's a, we've started it, and then it stops, and we start it again, and I realize it's a complex issue. It's not an easy issue to, to address, both in terms of what we should do and how to get it done. But I would like to start the conversation again. The article, if you had, I hope you had an opportunity to read it. It talks about the physiology and makeup of teenagers, and their need for sleep being different, or in different increments than adults or younger children, and the way puberty affects their sleep, and things along those lines. I think everyone except for Mr. Olympia, and, and the mayor, has or had teenagers, and I think that it, it certainly seems to play true for, for my teenager. So I realize that, you know, in order for us to act on this, we do need to either bargain or impact bargain. I realize that there's, would be a change in transportation schedules, and I would just ask that if we could either form a committee or have a conversation about setting up a committee for this subject, school start times, and, and ask that it would include the Director of Transportation, it would include, I think it would need to include food services, it would need to include some union people, perhaps, teachers certainly, administrators certainly. I think that there's just enough evidence here and elsewhere that suggests- I think that there's just enough evidence here and elsewhere that suggests that the start time for the high school is too early. It should be later. I know that there's some complexities with athletics that would need to be involved. I know that there's some complexities with the initiative that the mayor brought forward when he was initially elected mayor of the city and the school committee adopted in terms of community service and time for children or students at the high school to complete their community service hours. I would just, that's the purpose of me bringing this forward, is hopefully we can engage the conversation again with all the stakeholders and have a meaningful conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. I think we should.
Through the chair.
Dr. Levine?
I think we have a subcommittee that was established, do we not? And I think Brandy is the chair of that subcommittee.
I think we're co-chairs, Dr. Levine.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't mean to step on toes.
No, no, that's quite all right. We haven't met yet regarding this issue. I think, through the chair, were we not waiting for a couple more volunteers?
Through the chair, I think we had put it out at a school committee meeting, looking for some people to join us, and I think we were talking about all of the department heads that you had mentioned, gathering some information, and we were just looking for a little more help, because it's a huge undertaking.
Yeah. No, I absolutely agree with that, and it is, it's a district-wide undertaking. There's a lot of parts that are moving here.
So through the chair, if I may recommend that maybe in the near future, you and I can set up a meeting, include Mr. Hockman, and stop the conversation.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports? Education Subcommittee, anything to report, Mr. Hockman?
I previously reported that we were gonna, that the Special Education Subcommittee was gonna meet on October 5. At this point, I do not believe that that meeting will take place. We will reschedule and postpone, of course.
Thank you. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Koppener?
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Okay. School Safety?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Rosigno?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this point.
City Council and Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, something to report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had the pleasure of having the first parent advisory board meeting of the year, took place here at Higgins last night, was well-attended. We still have to make sure that all of the schools are represented at that meeting and work on getting a good time for everybody, but we are going to be sticking with the third or fourth Monday of the month. Our goal for parent advisory board is always to avoid PTO meetings because your parent advisory board representative is a member of their respective PTO, and they go back to that meeting with information. So we will continue on Mondays. The meeting began at 7:00, and our guest speaker was Dr. Herb Levine, and I want to thank you, Dr. Levine. The parents were really appreciative of you coming in and speaking. The topics that Dr. Levine spoke of were the mental health issues going on that are being, I'm sorry, that are being addressed in our district, having the high school clinic, the substance abuse counselor available to students, and this was good information for the parents so that they could understand exactly what efforts are being made in the school district to address those issues. Also, Dr. Levine spoke of the discussion will be opening up again about redistricting because the schools are, a couple of the schools are really, really full with programs and population. Told the parents about the new science curriculum at the high school and at the Higgins, and explained how there are two science curriculums which are being evaluated at the elementary school, and that it's always recommended to do pilots so that the teachers themselves can give good feedback on how the materials work for the classes. Let's see, spoke about MCAS, explained that the MCAS results had been released, were being released last night, and let's see, spoke about the universal breakfast program, and then spoke of the new initiative at the Higgins cafeteria. And told the parents about the point-of-sale system, which we're hoping to extend into the other schools during the year. Dr. Levine said that the high school, hopefully, it'll be in place during the holidays, and elementary schools one by one. So by the end of the year, all the schools should have a point-of-sale program for the cafeteria purchases. Presently, the good part about that system is that it's quicker for the kids, they have more time to eat. There's no distinction between free and reduced lunch, as well as for the students who pay full price, and explained that many of the kids at the high school, high school will not self-identify as far as needing free and reduced lunch, and we're hopeful that this is going to help those students to get a good nutritious meal. Ms. Murtagh attended the meeting, and at that point, we were all treated to a sample meal from our cafeteria, and the reviews were very, very positive, and we had, what was it?
Tangerine chicken.
Tangerine chicken on rice with peas, broccoli with bacon, a fruit cup, and, oh, the cookie. Can't forget the cookie. And the parents were really impressed by it. One of the things that you'll notice that the food at the Higgins is a bit different is the presentation, and that's one of the things that Dr. Levine had addressed with the consultant that came in. This food was served in a small, the Chinese food box that you would get at a Chinese restaurant, and everything was very, very well-prepared. It was a very delicious meal, certainly great portions for the older kids. I know that's always been a concern of parents. When a lot of changes happened in the cafeteria, there was a lot of concern about the portion sizes. These were definitely very, very well-thought-out, and the parents got to enjoy the different style in that cafeteria because it's more of a food court as opposed to the traditional cafeteria that we're all used to in our schools. So it was a really nice way to kick off the year. It had been an issue that the parent advisory board had brought forward. They were talking about, you know, different concerns with the cafeteria, with the operations of the cafeterias at the different schools, and this was informative for them, and it was actually a really nice treat. And we also did explain that if they needed a parent board to evaluate any of the meals, that they are more than welcome to come to parent advisory board. I'll let you all know about that if they're gonna serve again, because it was very, very nice. And after we were, after we went through the line and got our food, the parents brought up just a few things as we ate. They were talking about concerns about, let's see, the before and after-school program, which Dr. Levine informed us of. The holdup for some of the schools, it's, you know, getting the licensure, getting the staff in place, making sure that they're going to be able to meet their quota. And I did, we did make sure that the parents understood that FKO is the vendor, that the school department is not running the before or after-school programs. We have brought them in to partner with us, but that FKO makes the ultimate decisions on what their, you know, the staffing needs and what the program will consist of for the students. Let's see. Parents also, let's see, they also brought up about, I'm sorry, the, they would like to get a letter out explaining what the parent advisory board is and be able to contact parents so that parents can bring their concerns to the parent advisory board representative. And they did give me a list of some things that I do need to bring to you, Dr. Levine, so that we can, again, bring that back to the parents, and then they can spread that word to their respective PTOs. So the next meeting will be the 24th of October, and we will hold it here at Higgins.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, I would like to schedule actually two meetings prior to our next regular scheduled meeting on October 12. I'd like to schedule building and grounds at 5:30, and then executive session at 6:15. We've moved it to the October 18th. So it'd be October 18th, 5:30 would be building and grounds, 6:15 would be executive session, and 7:00 would be the regular meeting. Okay? We did have, I didn't want to report, we did have an executive session, as I had mentioned in my opening remarks preceding this meeting tonight, and at that meeting, there was votes taken to release a number of executive session minutes, and I'd like to read those minutes now that were voted to be released. Actually, we, actually, we gotta do some work on that. I'll announce those minutes at the next meeting. But there was a number of minutes that we voted on to release, and we'll announce those minutes at the next council, our next school committee meeting. Items for next agenda will be handled in the regular course. Any follow-up or any remaining items, Mr. Hockman?
Mr. Mayor, would it be all right with you if I went through this baseball issue?
Oh, do you want to do that now? Okay.
As a prelim, preliminarily, at least, I think, if I may.
I'm thinking, Mr. Hockman, we might want to put that into Athletics and Wellness Committee for a discussion. How does the committee feel about that? I don't know, I mean.
Makes sense to me.
I don't have any objection with that.
Yeah?
That's fine.
Because I think that's a topic that certainly needs discussion, I think. Well, is that comfortable with the committee? Mrs. Koppener?
Just a question. Well, one is, where it's not on the agenda, I guess it would, it could only be brought up at the end, but is it time-sensitive?
I don't believe it is, considering that the sports in question would be during the spring, and that's what concerns me, is it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It was a late communication, which we accepted, but I think any discussion should probably wait till the next meeting.
My point was, I believe it's something that you're bringing up. If it's time-sensitive, we should just put it on the next agenda. If it's not, we can put it in our committee.
No, if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Through you to Mrs. Koppener, thank you for the consideration. I appreciate the thoughtfulness. No, it's not time-sensitive in the sense that we need to act on it today or at our October 18 meeting. I think Mr. Rosigno's committee would be the appropriate place for it, and perhaps we can, it would be something I'd want out of the committee by late fall, early winter, so that we could discuss it in a timely manner.
I agree. Okay. Any other remaining items before we move to adjourn? Thank you for a good meeting, and.
Oh, sure. The parade, oh yeah, I forgot about that little parade we have going.
So I did want to remind everybody, we sent out a code-red message today, citywide. I think everybody knows that we have a parade. Our centennial parade is this Sunday, October 2. It commences at 11:00 a.m. It's going to be spectacular. It's gonna start at the corner of Washington and Foster Street, go east down Washington Street, take a left onto Main Street, all the way down Main Street onto Lowell Street, and then we'll wrap up at North Shore Road. It's about a two-mile loop, and we really are very proud of the entertainment we're gonna have, of the military. We're gonna be honoring our military bands and groups. We have a large kid, child presence that will be in the parade as well, and I think it's gonna be something special that will provide many memories for all of us. Following that, we've also added a after-party at Emerson Park, which will have food trucks, games, entertainment at Emerson Park. That'll start at 12:00, going on till about 4:00 o'clock, and that's just another addition to the centennial event that I think will be wonderful for families, and it'll be some great food and some great entertainment. So that's going along with the parade. We figured the parade will be about two or three hours. It's commencing, as I said, at 11:00. Parking is available at Centennial Park. Also, parking is available at the Higgins Middle School, and we expect a large crowd. You may want to get there early, and I think it will be something very memorable for all of us. That is this Sunday, October 2, beginning at 11:00 a.m., and again, hopefully, everybody can join. The City of Peabody has a wonderful history. I mentioned last night, we had over 200 volunteers. We met yesterday at the Council on Aging, 200 volunteers for that day. It's amazing the logistics that go into that. I was pretty naive in realizing what takes place to put this event together. And I spoke about the fact that in the City of Peabody, we don't have a, Salem's been able to take advantage of the witch trials and claiming ownership of that, even though some of that took place in the City of Peabody, and they've been able to build a little tourism through there. We do not have any beachfront that's often an attraction for a city, and we don't have any colleges, unfortunately, that some of the other surrounding cities and towns have. What we do have is a history of hard-working men and women, the leather industry, which built so many families and built so many foundations here in the city, my family being one of those, and we have a history of, it's a working man's, a working woman's history, and I think that's something to be proud of in our own right. We're gonna be able to showcase our city, things that we're very proud of. I spoke about, quite a bit about the Higgins Middle School, something that all of the investment that we made, that's something's very proud. I know all of us feel that way. And some of the other improvements that we've made as a city. So a lot taking place, a lot to celebrate. We certainly have a much longer history than 100 years, but it is a City of Peabody was voted on by the city, by the town at the time in 1916, and that's what we're celebrating this year. Couple of other events upcoming, but the parade is really the marquee event, and I hope everybody can come out and enjoy a wonderful day. So far, the weather's looking pretty good. Shouldn't have said that, now that the words came out of my mouth, but hopefully it will work out. But please come and join us, it'll be a special event. With that, move to adjourn? All right. Thank you.